Guys, recording. Everybody's in. It's recording. Where's that echo though? Testing.
I have an echo. You get to hear it twice.
Everybody's in. Twenty, well, twenty-three. Are you in there? So it's twenty-two because me as DJ, exclude me as DJ.
Everybody, can you mute? Can you mute everybody in the audience?
Okay, here we go. Regular meeting of Smithfield Town Council, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Book, we will read this in the prayer and the pledge, please.
Lord, assist with thy Holy Spirit of council all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United-
Of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Vocal.
Ms. Alves, Mr. Carvo, Mrs. O'Hara, Mr. Badney, Mr. Bureau God.
Ms. Alves. Move that out of the form. The motion, we have a second. We're just gonna move that into the agenda change and, okay.
I wanted to recognize Aiden Bozeman for his achievements in sports this year in senior year. So the town council is pleased to present him with two official citations. Just to see what it says. But Aiden hereby known to well that the Smithfield Town Council hereby offers a serious congratulations to Aiden Bozeman in recognition of being select for the Rhode Island first team All-State soccer team as well as the Rhode Island first team All-State Division three world academic soccer team as well as in recognition of winning the Rhode Island state championship in track.
Sorry for the technical difficulties, but a star will always shine.
So Aiden will see you after the final draft.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me down there?
There's a phone number here that doesn't have a name.
Can you hear me?
I saw Matt earlier. Matt was there.
I'm here.
I hear him. Oh, there he is. There he is. We just can't hear him.
Can you hear me now? Alrighty. So Aiden, I've come into this meeting. I wanted to give you my personal congratulations from the athletic department in North Smithfield High School for your historic accomplishment in a year that has been anything but a normal year in your senior year. As obviously, we have challenges that have been facing us and you have risen to face them head on. I couldn't be more proud of what you have accomplished as becoming the first male to ever win a state individual championship, fifty-five meter hurdles. You also set the new school record. So in addition to setting the school record, we have a banner on order for you that will be raised to the rafters and will hang forever as you become part of the history and law of North Smithfield High School. So on behalf of all of us in the school district and for the town of North Smithfield, super proud of your accomplishments and your historic moment and all congratulations to you. It's well earned and I can't wait to get that banner in the gym for you so you can see it hanging where it belongs. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Tech.
I can't breathe.
Hey, woman on. Open forum for students around the last forty-two, that forty-six, and six. Is there anybody else down that would like to be heard during open forum season? Cynthia, is there anybody out there that wants to be heard during open forum?
I don't see any one reason to hear, Mr. President. Oh, wait a minute. John, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Cynthia. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so my name's John Baxter. I, because of another commitment, I won't be able to speak on agenda item, on the new business item C, which is regards the property of Michael Manjin. So can I ask the council's indulgence if I may be able to speak on it now? And then Mr. Manjin and his attorney will be speaking on it when it comes up for new business.
This is what I'll do for you, sir. I will, I will, I'm gonna give anybody else the opportunity to speak during open forum. And then when I close open forum, I'll move that item to the top of the agenda so you can see it that time. But this wouldn't be the prime time, so just give it a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Gail. Does a Gail Denome, Denami wants to speak.
Mr. Denome, did you want to be heard?
Yes, I do. How are you tonight? And I hope you're all safe.
Thank you.
I know COVID did us a real disservice last year and a lot of the boards and a lot of the committees didn't really get to meet and talk about a lot of things that should be done within the town. My concern as a private citizen is the watersheds and the aquifer in this town. We have to protect it. And I saw recently that the new website has a new map of exempt areas for manufacturing. I know this was actually passed last year with the old council. And I'd really like to see another new workshop with actually the public, the zoning board, the planning board, and the town council talk about all the errors that are in this six-point-one-nine ordinance. And as a concerned citizen, I take exception to the fact that you're exempting existing manufacturing. Okay, which is, I can understand that. But there are over ten exemptions that aren't even allowed in this area. So you're making a whole new map of an exemption area. To me, it looks like a supplemental exempt district. And I know you want to have more manufacturing, more. But what's exempt here is actually car washes and, and everything that's going on near one-on-two. So as a concerned citizen, I'm really begging you to have another open forum, another open workshop where everybody can get together and really fix this ordinance because it's a mess. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, for the record, Mr. Denome, that ordinance was sent, that resolution was sent back, I mean, the order was an ordinance, it was sent back to planning at the last meeting at the request of Mr. Denupio and then to review the exactly what he talked about. So planning is gonna go over that, that right. And also, Mr. Denupio was asked to attend that planning board meeting and give his recommendations. I don't think that they had doubled that yet. So if I were you, I would speak with Mr. Denupio or somebody on planning and keep an eye on the agenda because that is, that is coming up in planning and once they go over the, the ordinance, it's gonna come back to the council for final approval. So that is in the works, exactly what you're saying. It is being looked at right now, as expected.
I went, I went to that planning board meeting, Mr. Bogart. And there's quite a, quite a few things as a citizen.
Scott Martin.
Okay, Mr. Denome, can you repeat that?
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Bogart. I was at the planning board meeting and I sat through the whole planning board meeting. And as a concerned citizen, there were quite a few things that came up that Mr. Kravitz said that he would probably look into. And I just don't like one person looking over this whole six-point-line-nine district by themselves. You need the other boards, you need other input from the planning board, you need input from the zoning board, you need input from people out in there that don't wanna be on the boards that would love to say, hey, listen, we can't have this kind of industry right next to our aquifer. It's not allowed. It's not permitted. There's only four things that are permitted in that aquifer zone. Four. Now, if you exempt these, who's gonna, who's gonna, who's gonna monitor that? Who's gonna monitor these new places that are coming in? And one of them is a cabinet. And under this one, I saw the other day going over, you can't have refinishing, cabinet refinishing in that six-point-one-nine area. And that's exactly what's going up. So, um, thank you for listening to me. I'm very passionate about this because I've been around watersheds and DEM my whole life. And for us to go through all this work for the past thirty years and then to blow it up because we want some, uh, manufacturing that's not allowed in these areas. And then who's gonna monitor it? That's what I really wanna know. Who's gonna monitor these exempt manufacturers? So thank you and I yield to whoever.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Scott Martin.
Scott Martin.
Yeah, Martin.
Mr. Martin.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, I'm Scott Martin. I'm the vice chair of the zoning board. But I'm in front of you tonight as a concerned citizen, just like Mr. Denome. Um, I, I agree with everything that she said about that. The only thing that I would add to that would be if we do open that back up for discussion. Um, I'd like to see the people that actually wrote those maps originally from state, which would be the Department of Health and the URI Co-op. Um, because this, this new map took areas that those committees had said was off limit for those types of manufacturing, you know, businesses. And now that map's been changed to open up some of those areas to allow that type of manufacturing. So, you know, I would, I'd like to see the Co-op and the Department of Health who wrote those maps for, for every town in this state to be included in those meetings so that we can have a discussion on, you know, what would happen if that was allowed in those districts. So that's all I have. I yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there anybody else out there that wants to be heard?
No, I don't see any hands. No.
That's Paul. Nobody? Okay, move on. Discussion by council, vote on action, I'm dating on bills. Is there anybody that has any question on the, on the invoice this time? I actually have a couple. If I can, if we're gonna be quiet. If you go to page two. Mr. Here? Yeah, I'm, I'm correct. You did say you're gonna take off. I did, I did say that. I didn't write it down. All right, so let me find out my, no, no, one second.
Mr. Baxter, John, it's State of Rhode Island General Assembly.
Good evening. Everyone hear me okay?
New business, discussion by council on action on correspondence of John S. Baxter Jr., Director of Senate Office Constituent Services Regarding One Hundred Property, Math thirteen, Lot ninety-two, one ninety-nine Eddie Dowling Highway. Our I E M A B R I C grant request. Baxter?
Thank you for hearing me. The, I believe the town council members should have received materials from our office as well. It's in regards to the property at one-nine-nine Eddie Dowling Highway in North Smithfield, owned by Mr. Michael Manjin. At the request of Senator Roger Card, I had contacted Mr. Manjin regarding some concerns that he had about water quality on his property and encroaching wetlands. I had asked for Ronald Gagnon from the Department of Environmental Management to join me on a walk-through which we performed on October fifth. When we arrived and performed the walk-through, what we had witnessed was actually the complete reclamation of the Manjin property by the perimeter wetlands. And as the photos that I provided to you show, wetland vegetation has completely encroached three sides of the Manjin property now, rendering the property almost uninhabitable. In addition to that, the water table has risen to such a level that Mr. Manjin's pump, his sump pump and other water removal instruments have become overwhelmed. And to add to that, the, he does not have town or city water. So he has to get water from a well. And the well that he had providing water to the home is completely contaminated. They, has a very high sodium content. There was an attempt with state assistance to dig a second well, which went as deep as seven hundred feet. And regrettably, the sodium level in the water was still rendered an undrinkable, unusable, actually. So with that, I had appealed to the Departments of Health, Transportation, and Environmental Management to see if there was an action plan to take over the Manjin property and possibly give them fair value for the property. There was not a vehicle that, in the possession of either the Department of Environmental Management or the Department of Transportation to do this. What was suggested is that Mr. Manjin appeal for funding through the BRIC program, which is the Building Resistant Infrastructure and Communities Program. It's a federal program administered by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. He has the ability to do this, however, it requires town council approval as the property will eventually be taken off the town's tax rule. And so it requires the authorization of the town council to do this. So that's why we're before you tonight.
Is there anybody else that wanna be heard on this one, Mr. Baxter, in your group?
I believe Mr. Manjin should be participating as well. That was my understanding when I spoke to him today. Possibly Tom Kravitz, the town planner, if he's in this meeting as well.
Mr. Martin. John as well.
I am here. I'm here, John.
Mr. Kravitz?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Can the council hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I am, I am here. You know, for what it is, if you read the document you have, Mr. Manjin did make an investment knowing that there was, the water was contaminated. On the second paragraph of the second page of the document, it talks about a well-water treatment system was considered. I was wondering why that wasn't pursued as a remedy. Perhaps it depends on the cost. The only other thought I have on this is, this is gonna take time for me to put the grant together. RI E M A grants can be complicated. Oftentimes, they require a day or two workshop if the funds are coming from E M A. And it's just gonna take, it's gonna take time for me to do it. So it's really the town council decision if they want me to be spending my time doing that. The only question I had is who would own this property at the end of the process if it all came to be?
That I don't have an answer for, Mr. Kravitz.
All right, you know what I would like to do? I would like to take note of this. My suggestion is we take no action on this. I'm gonna ask Mr. Igliozzi to take a look at this program. The B R, the Brick Building, Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program. I'm gonna take a look at it, see if it applies. I just wanna make sure that we don't approve this and then all of a sudden the town's on the hook for something that we didn't expect. So my recommendation is take no action right now until we have a solicitor to take a look at it, discuss it with Mr. Mr. Kravitz, and then we'll bring it back and we'll put it back on the agenda later date. Is that the, that be acceptable to you, Mr. Baxter?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Mr. President.
I just wanna make sure when I'm getting up.
And that, I wanted- Right. That's perfectly understandable. I wanted to be clear, I'm not here to rep, I'm not here to represent Mr. in any legal capacity. I'm solely here as the Director of the Senate Office of Constituent Services, performing a service at the request of Senator Roger Card to assist Mr. Manjin. It would not be my decision or opinion one way or the other how the council chooses to act on it. But we would be thankful if you would maintain consideration and certainly asking Mr. Rigliozzi, and hello, Senator, if I may, Mr. Rigliozzi to pursue that is perfectly proper.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Can I be here?
Joe Lamanja?
Joe Lamanja?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm here with Mr. Manjin and we're here to answer any questions. I'd like to just point out that this property was purchased by Mr. Manjin when it was useful and he had tenants at the property. And because of some construction work that went on on Eddie Dowling Highway, improving the drainage in that area, the wetland next door enlarged itself and polluted the freshwater supply. At one time, as Mr. Baxter pointed out, there was an attempt to drill another well that was unsuccessful. The State Department of Transportation provided fresh drinking water for several years. Then the septic system became contaminated with the rising water table. And now the property has a permanent four- or five-inch water accumulation in the basement. That's with the sump pump operating twenty-four-seven. So the property has become essentially useless. It can't be occupied. And the flora and fauna of the wetlands are now right up against the foundation surrounding the house. It's just, it's uninhabitable. It's unusable.
Yeah, I'm all for, you know, but I just, I just wanna make sure that the town is not getting themselves into anything. So we just gonna vet this, the process here. We just don't have enough information about this program to vote yes or no. We vote yes, we could be doing the town services. We vote no, we could be doing your client services. So we just wanna do our diligence, do a little homework about this program and then we put it back on the agenda when we, when we know more about the program. Is that acceptable?
I understand. I agree with that and you can count on our cooperation.
Thank you. Anyway, before we sit down, we were at the table of bills. And I was questioning, I go back to the floor. Page of bills, and I was questioning. Page from page two. Coming with the fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, branch, moving engineering is.
I think that was the study and I think Tom's on the phone. Tom?
Yes, I can, I, I-
Was that the traffic study on Branch Avenue?
Yes, I can speak to that, yeah.
Yeah, could you please?
That's, that's, is it beta, it's gotta be beta engineering, right?
Correct.
Yes, that, yeah.
Yeah, that's Beta proceeding with their engineer design of the relocation of the ramp, the on-ramp north from Pound Hill Road to one forty-six, along with the new access road that will go up into Branch Village. So that's, that work is progressing and the invoice is definitely good to pay.
All right, thank you. And then I had one more question. Page eight. Page eight, on the top. This was, ma'am, I did sixty-eight dollars for an ad for the Hall of Fame review committee, correct? So there was an ad placed for the Hall of Fame committee?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure we get there. Okay. I didn't have any more questions. Anybody? Yeah, was that the table now? Would we move the, move the bills as presented? You have a motion and a second? Anyone to say it? Vocal, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes. Question by council, vote on the action on consent agenda. All items in this section are considered in one motion. Do we know some discussion will be tonight under the council's overall request? In which event, the item will be removed in consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like removed in the consent agenda? I would pay a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Does it like make a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda?
Do we have a second? Any representative second? Vocal, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo? Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes. Question by council, vote on action on- Okay, this one, this one. If you look at number seven, temporary exemption from going to weapons on Ice Mine Hill Road, now we have to let it come in. Now, I understand National Grid would like to withdraw the request for the succession, is that correct? But is a representative from National Grid here that would like to speak?
Uh, yes, George Watson, President.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hi, George Watson, outside siding council for National Grid. We just wanted to explain that we filed the request for the exemption- We just wanted to explain that we filed the request for the exemption because we were facing some construction delays. And due to the time it takes to apply for the exemption, we filed it in early March out of precaution. With the warmer weather and some, some effort with the work, the guys have caught up. And so there's no longer a need for the exemption, which is why the company is withdrawing the application.
Okay, well, thank you very much and is the application being withdrawn, then we will need the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Question by council, what other action on municipal building review task force? Mr. Nordstrom, do you want that?
It is. Unmute yourself.
I'm prepared to talk about item two. The payment of the bill for Judge Pfeiffer. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
But I thought item one was something for the council to act on, independent of the task force.
Yeah, we're going to move back to that in a second. Was there anything else you wanted to say as far as this, we're just looking for approval payment, correct?
Right, that was for the mediation that was held on March 9th. I mean, March 2nd. The bill is split equally between the two parties, so our share of the bill is $1,855 and it covers the period from December 9th up through the arbitrary mediation of March 2nd.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice of $1,055 mark paid by first for the mediation.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call please.
Ms. Al? Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Okay, just moving on. This is the appointment, the council appointment for the building review task force. At this time, I would like to nominate Mr. Badney for that position for the council for the building review task force. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, can I have a second on Mr. Badney? Any discussion, please? Okay, roll call please.
Ms. Al?
No.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Bureau God?
Yes. Yes.
Congratulations to Mr. Badney here. Okay, moving on, a discussion by council, what other action on the project committee members? One of the one members completed a three-year term entering 12/1/21. This is a town council appointment. It seems to be working out pretty well as what we've done in the past. Anybody have a nomination? We'll put the name up and then we'll go back and we'll call for a second and vote if they get sent. So does anybody have any nominations for the, the budget committee this time?
Mr. President?
Fill that spot and just to give a little information, the reason I was selecting him is to do that. He has experience in that position. He's been on the council of the budget committees already starting and almost too much halfway to be told upon. So the budget committee already has two people this year to fill out this role. I was just wanting to put someone who had experience so we can assist the other two members to come in with experience and also to help train or lead the way that we are more reserved for this than what happens in the whole process. So my, I would like to point that.
Okay, there's one nomination for Mr. Oj. Does anybody else have anything they would like to nominate? I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Badney, do you bear, do you still bear us?
Mr. Bureau God?
Any?
Mr. President?
And Mr. Badney?
I did not hear who was nominated or if there was a second for that position.
Oh, I'm sorry, what we're doing is what we've done in the past and it seems to work out pretty well is we're just going to put the nominations up first so people can see that who was nominated and then.
I understand, but I did not.
Have to do a second instead of calling the vote right away.
I did not hear who was nominated.
Ms. Al nominated Doug Ojia for this position.
At this time, I'd like to nominate Christine Early for a position on the Budget Committee.
Okay, we have a nomination for Christine Early? Okay, there's one, one person that I feel, I went through these resumes pretty thoroughly and I'm going to nominate Alan Vars for this position. And the reason I would like to nominate him was he was a member of two charter commission in Kentucky. He's appointed by the Kentucky City Council to serve as fiscal analyst for the town council, the city council. Employed by the federal government overseeing medicated programs and the capacity service financial analysts. So I'm going to nominate this is the Vars. So is there any other nomination? Okay, so let's start with the day now. You have Mr. Oj. We have a second, Mr. Oj. Okay, no second, Mr. Oj.
Mr. President, yeah, you just want to ask that question three times, just to.
Sure. Once again, is there a second for Mr. Oj? And one last time, there's a second for Mr. Oj. Great, moving on, Christine Early, will we have a second for Christine Early? We have a second for Christine Early, okay? Roll call for Christine Early, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
So Christine Early will be a member of the Budget Committee. Okay, moving on, a discussion by council about an action on contingency transfers from town council reserves 2018 recreation land acquisition to the Chico Park entrance. Like just a little background on this. This is money that was appropriated for the purchase of the house that sat right over when we built an entrance to Chico Park. And we ended up spending $39,460 less than we appropriated for that purchase. And that money was still remaining in the account to be appropriate to the land acquisition. What I would like to do is move that money from that account in an account in order to begin work. This is step one on that, I get on that, get the process going. It's been way too long before that land, almost three years ago. And it's time to stop working on getting that interest done. So this is the first step in doing that and so my motion is to move reserve recreation land acquisition from account E001-2533-053-1136 in the amount of $39,460. Mr. Sages, how would you say the account is going to go to?
It's going to stay in the same account, just the description's going to be different. To Chico Park entrance.
Okay.
If that's what you're going to spend it on was your, the planning or the design of it.
Well, that would be a lot of it.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So, actually, that's, that's the next one. That's a motion, by the way. That's a second, does anybody have any discussion on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Badney?
Do we know, do we know where that entrance is going to be or is this to determine where the second entrance is going to be into the park?
This is to get the ball rolling. That's a good question, this is to get the ball rolling, but the entrance, hopefully the entrance is going to go right where we want to purchase that house and knock the house down. Otherwise, we would have spent a lot of money for nothing on that one. But it's going to be just to the left of the existing entrance. However, we got to first begin with, you know, get a study going and then have an engineer take a look at it and get some print drawings to get this going. But we got to, we got to get moving on this and this is just the first step. Anything else?
Mr. President.
Ms. Al? Ray wants to talk.
Okay, Mr. Pedigast, are you up there?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in on this. First off, to Councilor Badney, no, there are no just plans for this. I think this is the first step as the council president has thrown out there. What we have is a couple of conceptual renderings that we would like to put there. We have to conform to RIDOT standards with the new construction that was just put out there. So as Mr. Borogod has stated, this is the first step. Let's move forward and we can keep this project going. This is a great project, the entrance. There are two types of situations that we have. We're going to move the entrance down for better visibility. But let's just, let's, let's start with this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pedigast, I hope you can. Anybody good, anybody else? Okay. We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Question by council, what other action on option to purchase or lease fire truck description with toy on bumper with 1,000 gallon tank, 1,500 gallon proven pump, 1,000 stainless steel body and a spun metal stock custom chassis in purchase in the amount of $561,378 all week in CNS registration. So today, so first of all, is the chief, by chief.
Yes, he's on.
But this kind of got a little a little bit because of a conversation that we had with chief and we just a little messed up. So what's the intention, what are you recommending, purchasing it or leasing it? What seems to be the general consensus here?
I'm going to vote for purchasing it. I'm going to tell you why. There's over a million dollars in account 20. I know the chief's worried about future equipment purchases, but why don't we worry about that when we cross that bridge? If there is a problem, then we'll have the rating and the credit to be able to borrow. Why rush into it and why let's sit a million dollars in an account that's not earning hardly any interest to pay somebody else almost 3% in interest? So my recommendation is to purchase outright. That money will just sit there, you know, have, have to be jeopardized to be used for other non-motorized equipment, which the intent of that account was to do, to do all motorized equipment for the fire department. We even have a schedule. The schedule that says replace engine two, replace engine rescue one. We have a schedule for the next four years, I mean, next, I'm sorry, six years to purchase equipment. If it goes as planned, there's no reason why we need to borrow any money at all from. So that's my recommendation.
President?
I had a discussion with the finance director and one of the things to keep in mind too is if it's purchased straight out, we do have that line 20. And if there were an emergency, maybe that if there was a need for expediting a second large piece of equipment, at that point you could consider going out to lease.
I mean, I mean, obviously as a last resort, if there was a real emergency, we have to continue to liquid.
Yes.
I just, an asset, as soon as you drive it away, it depreciates so rapidly. I just don't see a need if the money's there. I mean, we're only going to deplete half of it. So. I don't know if the chief has anything. Yeah, I know, and we, I didn't think, like, we didn't expect that $266,000 to come in either. So I get the chief's concern about depleting the account. But we, you know, at one time, when before I started here, this account had a million dollars and nobody was spending any money from it. The trucks were breaking. I mean, that's what the money's there for, is to replace their equipment, so. Just my thought process.
Well, let me ask you something, how long does it take to complete it, $561,000 in that account? How long, how many years?
About two years. About two years.
That's, that's.
Right, no. And like I said, I mean, we have the credit, we, we're, our bonding is unbelievable, double. So we're not going to have a problem borrowing money if we ever had an emergency. I don't see why. I don't know, chief, do you have anything to say? Because I know me and you didn't really agree on this.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, yes, now that Cynthia and I have met and realized that we have that additional $266,000 coming in, you know, I'm comfortable with this outright purchase. We're going to continue to generate third-party billing month by month, just as, as we have right along. So we're, we're averaging anywhere between $25,000 and $30,000 in third-party billing every month. So at this point, I'm fine with the outright purchase. I think what we need to decide on a more important note is whether we're going to purchase it with an upfront payment, which will save us an additional $10,524 if we pay in full upfront to towing fire apparatus. I, I think that's another thing that needs to be decided tonight as well before we sign the contract.
Right, and they sent over a sample of a bond only because for us to, I would not recommend writing out a check for, you know, more than a half a million dollars without knowing that the company's stable or that we have some kind of bond that if something happens, we are covered for the $550,000. The only thing I don't understand about the bond is if we purchase the bond or they purchase the bond. There was a little discrepancy and I don't know if Skip's on the phone? If you want to chime in on that, on the performance bond, if we paid upfront? He's on the phone.
I believe Mr. Hero is on, Skip, are you there?
He's there, he's just, he's muted. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yes, the cost of the bond is already calculated in the price of the truck. So there would not be any additional costs for the bond. The bond would be included automatically.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that being said, Mr. President, there is two, there is a contract that you all have for the purchase and it is lower than the original bid price because it does take into account the prepayment discount. So I just want to make that clear. So when you vote on it, you vote for the right amount. So, I just wanna make that clear. Um, so when you go on it, you vote for the rate amount. Um, the purchase agreement is for five hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty two cents, which gives us a discount of ten thousand, five hundred, twenty four dollars and twenty six cents if we prepay.
So, the final price, I'm sorry, is five hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty three.
If we prepay, if you decide as long as the performance bond is intact, and I would like, um, we have a bond council that I can send the performance bond, make sure it's I'm comfortable with it, yes, I would like to prepay. Because this was just a sample, it doesn't have any information about the company, I couldn't really send it to her. I would like it all filled out. I don't know if you're there, Skip, if you're still there, Skip. Um, and once I get it, I can send it to our bond council, and she'll look it over and and just give me her recommendation.
Okay. Anyone have anything else?
Mr. President, if I could just add, what the?
Chief?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, there's a little delay, so that's why we presented the law on the line. Go ahead.
All right, no problem. Uh, if I could just add one more thing, I just wanna be, uh, totally upfront here that this is just for the purchase of the apparatus. We are gonna need some secondary equipment to go along with that, radio equipment, hose, um, things of that nature, could, it, that could uh, add up to, in the general neighborhood of anywhere between fifty and sixty thousand more dollars. So, just, I just wanna make sure that we're uh, we're upfront with that. That this, this purchase tonight is just for the apparatus itself.
Yeah, well, maybe everybody will say that.
Mr. President.
So, then I would like to make a motion, yeah? Mr. Baden.
Yes, I was just going to, um, I was gonna make a motion so we could get the discussion, so I would make a motion that we we go forward with the purchase of a toy uh, pumper truck in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty two cents, based on the recommendation of the Finance Director and the Administration.
Yeah, I would also like to add to that, uh, also authorize the Administrator to sign necessary documents, and this is all based on the recommendations from Mark Allen.
Thank you. That's what I was gonna ask you.
Okay, uh, so do we have a second on that? Or we have a second? Is there further discussion on this?
I just have the discussion on page two. And right near the top of the page, it says, "The name of the person authorized by the second party to authorize change orders shall be Chief Dave Shawdier." The only, the only question I have to that is the chief works for an independent company and the town is the one that owns the fire truck? Please change orders be going back through the council for approval. The chief can recommend them, but it should, should it come back through the council for any approvals?
Yeah. It's good job.
The, the only thing I might add to that is to, to Vadney is that, that sometimes those things, it was my experience when I first took over as the Fire Chief and then we were building Engine One, uh, that sometimes those things need to be acted on kind of quickly. So, to wait for council approval would hold up the production of the truck.
They can't do that.
Um, so, if, if we could, um, find a way to either, uh, right now authorize the Administrator or, or, or me, whoever, just to approve that, so that we can keep production going, um, I would recommend that. Um, like I said, sometimes, I, I believe I had to sign two change orders when I arrived. Um, and that, and, and that needs to get done kind of in a timely manner with, when that happened. Uh, Skip, correct me if I'm wrong, i- is that probably the better way to go, where we give approval to make things happen a little bit faster?
Yeah, you, you can't have the change orders being delayed for extended period of times, and sometimes the change orders are simply nothing more than, uh, um, oh, change one shelf to one location or something similar to that. Uh, there wouldn't be anything of significant, uh, financial value, um, in the change orders, um. I wouldn't foresee, um, if that were the case, then, uh, that would be a si- different situation, but, uh, uh, most of the time, the, either the Fire Chief or the Administrator is authorized to authorize the change order.
So, mo- most of the changes would probably be design issues more than, more than purchasing upgrades or, or, um, other issues such as that.
That's correct.
Mr. President, uh, I think it's just a phone call away, and we wouldn't, uh, have an open meetings act if I were to call you and Vice President Alz to get your opinion before I made that decision.
So, uh, so is there a contract necessary?
I'm sorry.
We don't have a limited contract.
I don't believe so, no. And we're gonna possibly have, uh, so let's say, Gleyo, is he take a look at it again?
Is he Gleyo, is he up there?
Yeah. Um, I, I might, I think I'm, if I'm gathering the issue clearly, seems to me the only question you need to do is indicate that the change orders will not involve money, or if they do involve money, then set a certain amount under which they have to go back to the council. Because I think if it gets any significant kind of money, I don't think, um, I don't think the chief could authorize that change order, or, or, or it's either, I, I, I think you need to clarify, are these change orders that do not involve any cost to the town? That's the question that I would raise for the council.
David, it was, it was my experience with the other purchase that, um, the, the two change orders that I approved were actually change orders that reduce the price, if I'm not mistaken, so, um, I'm not gonna say that that's gonna be something that, uh, happens this time around, because there certainly could be something that comes up during, um, you know, during plan review with, with engineering, that, that could come up, but, um, you know, it was my experience in the last purchase that it was some small items that amounted to a small dollar decrease in the price.
Again, again, that goes to my point. There's, there's, does either the chief or the, the seller have any problem with limiting the, the authority of the change order to a certain amount?
Uh, this is, uh, Skip Hero. I would probably suggest, since the chief works for a private fire company, and the council is, uh, and the town is purchasing it, that maybe you just strike the, uh, chief's name as the authorized, uh, party for change orders and put the town administrator, uh, in his place. We'd have no problem with that whatsoever.
Well, that, that certainly addresses one of the issues. The other issue is council meetings meet every two weeks, so the question becomes, if there's a significant amount of a change order, I think the council would want to approve it. That's the, that's, I think, is the ultimate issue. The Administrator would the council would give certain authority not to exceed. That would be my understanding of the way the council would normally wanna proceed, but I don't wanna speak for them. I'm just raising the issue for them.
Mr. President.
Baden?
Yeah, I, I raised the question, not, not to question the chief's, the chief's ability or his, or his knowledge. I mean, he knows what he needs for a truck. It's a matter of, um, procedural. The, the, the town is the owners of the truck, like Mr. Gleyo is saying, and so, I don't know how we, how we, we answer this. I want the chief involved in designing that truck. We need the chief to be involved designing the truck. That's what he does for a living. That's what we pay him to do. Um, it's just a matter of how do we go about making sure that, that the council is aware of the change orders? That's, that was my only issue, and, and the solicitor brings up a point of different ways we can address it. It's just a matter of, we need to be aware, if there's change orders coming up, what they are.
Okay, I suggest that we, uh, authorize the Administrator to, uh, approve change orders based on the chief's recommendation, and not to exceed five thousand dollars, and anything for, uh, beyond the five thousand dollars, uh, is gonna require council approval.
Mr. President, I, I can assure you that should the change order come through, and it's not something structural, which does not, uh, elevate or increase the price uh, with the chief's, uh, information, it's not a hard, it's not a difficult challenge for me to approve that. However, but if it's a thousand dollars before approval, I'll make a phone call to you, Mr. President, and to Vice President Alz to get your feelings on it. Because what I don't want is the, uh, the manufacturer arbitrarily saying, well, they took a price increase. I don't know if that's our, our, uh, rely, uh, responsibility or not, so I will have that conversation with both the President, the Vice President, as well as the solicitor and the chief.
Now, that's probably internal, but it's not really anything to be done with a contract that we're gonna have to prove.
Right, well, it's been specked up. Uh, the chief knows what he wants for a truck, and that's what we should be purchasing for that amount of money.
Yes, we're going.
Yep.
Mr. President, could I, uh, make a comment?
Baden. Uh, Chief, go ahead.
No, that wasn't me, Mr. President.
I'd like to be the Fire Chief for one day, but, um, the director.
Oh, it was, it was Ray.
No, that's the chief of public works. Go ahead.
Start again, Ray. I lost it.
Uh, I, I just wanna make a, a, a point of consideration that um, I'm all in favor of however you wanna do the, the fire department and, and financing and this and that, but there are other departments where major expenditures are gonna happen in the next year or two, and I put some into capital. And I've also explored the world of leased own. And I just wanna make it on a record tonight that there is other options than getting, going through your savings account. And at the end, as we all know, every budget year, when it comes to June thirtieth, every capital expenditure gets kicked back two or three years because there's no money left in capital to take care of those expenditure. And I will make one point, my street sweeper. It's on, like, it's, uh, two thousand and six, I put in for capital. And I'm not trying to put a push on right now, but I, I just want, I, I just want the council to know that there are other options out there than putting all your savings account money into that little basket. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just, um, my concern, uh, Mr. Pedigast, is that, uh, the sheet that we have here in front of us is indicating that in five years, if we lease for five years, we're gonna have to pay thirty eight thousand, eighty two dollars in interest loan. Uh, in seven years, that'll move up to fifty six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And it's just such a small pounds odd, it just seems like a lot of money to pay unnecessarily.
And I wanna say for the record that that money that I, that we're gonna fund for this project has nothing to do with capital money, has nothing to do with general fund, is strictly third-party billing, it's in a separate fund, it's not gonna touch any of our general fund. So, I, I see Mr. Pedigast's concern, but it has nothing to do with our capital funds or anything like that. It's totally separate.
Just strictly in third-party.
Strictly, and it's in a separate account. Separate fund, it's kept separate. Um, money coming in and out of it is kept separate. It doesn't intermingle with the general fund. So, um, yeah, hasn't, it won't affect anything with town, with the town taxes or anything like that, so just wanna put that on the record.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve, uh, from Mr. Baden, and we have a second. Uh, and then after we feel, then we can make a recommendation on what you discussed about, uh, Chief Shawdier, that will be then defer to you for any, uh, changes that will require any money. Then you can let us know about.
Yes, that's fine.
First, let's go through the, uh, area motion on the table on the second. Uh, roll call that place.
Miss Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadneys?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Biagod?
Yes. Now, we, we, we don't need a council action for what we just discussed as far as, uh, Chief Shawdier, or find you, if there's any monetary changes that could be required.
I, I, I think that you have, the chief and myself, uh, will work well together, and as I, uh, to reiterate what I said earlier. Uh, if it's a simple change, uh, on, of equipment, and there's no cost involved, I defer to the chief immediately. If there's a price increase or something, I will call you, Mr. President, and I'll call, uh, Vice President Alz and say, uh, there's a certain price increase. It's what you had suggested earlier, if it goes over five thousand dollars, then we bring it before the council, the council will review. I, I'm, I'm hoping we don't have anything that comes in that nature.
All right. Miss Alves?
Do we need, Mr. President?
That's a motion, uh, we, we may have a signing, and we have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. President.
Roll call.
He stands up.
Mr. Baden.
Do we need, do we need to change that item on page two? From the chief to the Administrator?
Oh, yeah, of course. Well, yeah, we, we can do that tomorrow. I can have a clean sheet. We can check. I'm sorry. Oh, I, 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 I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Badney. We, we could, we could have this cleaned up tomorrow. You're voting to give me the authority to, 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 uh, sign it. I won't sign it unless I see town administrator Pauls Wolenski on there.
Okay. All right, so, uh, I, I don't know if you heard, Mr. Baden, so what we're gonna do is, um, if we authorize the town administrator to sign, uh, with Miss Al's, uh, motion, that Mr. Zelinski will make all the necessary changes on the, uh, on the contract prior to signing.
Mr. President, Chief Shawdier, I'm gonna assume that Skip's, he can clean that up and probably have a, a, a new copy to me first thing in the morning, and I'm pretty confident on that.
Can I amend my motion?
Oh, oh, you can amend the motion.
Can I amend my motion to read that we authorize the town administrator to sign the purchase contract, and see if that's done, as amended, to read, uh, authorization by town administrator rather than authorization from Chief Shawdier.
That's the motion. We have a second there. Yeah, oh, we have a second, so now, I don't, it was that, and then, uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Miss Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadneys?
Yes.
Mr. Biagod?
Yes.
This is, the discussion by council, what other action we find, A, contract document, B, number one, dash, two thousand and seventeen, police department renovation or, renovation or replacement. This agreement was already approved at a previous meeting. Basically, we have the contract at the end of the plan, so this is just a motion. It's just, uh, to authorize the legislature's signature for this, uh, contract. So, the, the motion is to authorize the, uh, time that the administrator signed the document for police department renovation or replacement analysis. All right, I made a motion, uh, just wanna have a second. Uh, do we have any discussion on that? Roll call.
Miss Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadneys?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Biagod?
Yes.
Especially my counsel, what other action, uh, award of four, we, we value today. Mr. Ayesha, do you wanna speak on this?
Sure. Sure. There were two sealed bids that were received on February twenty-fifth at ten AM. The first one was from Northeast Reval for a hundred and ninety-four thousand even, and the second was from Vision Government Solutions for two hundred and four thousand even, and this is for a full reval. We're up for this year to do a full reval. And the tax assessor submitted a recommendation to award it to the lowest bidder for a hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is to Northeast Reval Group LLC.
Ms. Alves?
I'm making a motion to approve the, uh, Northeast Revalation Program about a hundred and ninety-four thousand of full revaluation. For the, uh, recommendation of the tax assessor.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Vaden?
To the question of the finance director, who did, who did the last full-blown reval for us?
Northeast.
Northeast?
Yes.
Didn't we have a lot of issues with the last one that was done?
Are you talking about nine years ago or three years ago?
I believe it was a statistical that we had the issues with, but I think when we hired it, it's the same firm that goes through and does the statistical, isn't it?
Well, no, we go off a bid, so I'm, I wasn't here nine years ago, so I'm not sure, Mr. Vadnez. I know Northeast was the previous one when Sarah Frew was here. But that was a three-year.
That was a statistical analysis, correct?
Nine years, I didn't hear of any problems, to be honest.
I thought we had a lot of, a lot of abatements that came back forward that were not, um, that were not correct. Maybe we've cleaned all that up since then, I don't, I don't know, but I thought that we had a lot of problems with, uh, with the reval. We had a lot of people that were complaining, um, and we had a lot of, a lot of abatements that we had.
Since I've been here, I, we have not had, oh, like, more than, I don't know, abatements, no more than what I budget every year. I don't recall, to be honest.
Well, we used to, we used to budget in the range of two to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the abatements, and one, one of those years, we hit over six hundred thousand dollars in abatements.
I was not here during that time, and I had no knowledge that it was the revale.
Not saying that you were here, I'm just.
No, I just.
Going, going back, saying we, we've had issues in the past, and I believe it was Northeast, and we had those issues with. And I'm just wondering if, if, if you're comfortable in, in the, in the assessor are comfortable with them, that's okay then.
I'm comfortable with them, I've used them previously in my other positions, and I've never, we've never had any issues with them.
So, does any, you expect a certain number of people to question their?
Absolutely, and I budget for that, and that would be this upcoming year, I'll budget for, um, possible abatements. But since I've been here, I've never seen, probably in a full year, probably forty thousand abasement, abatements, and that's a bad year. We've never had, I don't recall, not, but it could have been nine years ago when I was here, I'm not sure.
Anything else, you mind? Okay, uh, we already have a motion and a second on this, so we're going to roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carovo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions by council, roll over the action on the basis of the bills.
Oh, I'm sorry, there were two, there were two, I'm sorry, I was, there were two abatements, um, total, one is for Eric Worm, I can't pronounce his name, but, Worm, Worm?
Worm.
Yeah, um, for sixty dollars and ninety-three cents, and then for Nicholas Z. Ferris?
X.
X, yeah, that, a hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-four cents, for a total of one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents, and they were both, um, one moved out of town, and then the other one had an insurance claim, and the car was totally torn. So I'm asking, um, for an abatement amount of one ninety-two sixty-seven.
So move, Mr.?
We want to prove the one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents, uh, the abatements on page one, we will be. Do we have a second? Roll call please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carovo? Zohara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
The second one is a, is a supplemental bill, it was a bill that was taxed to the wrong town, and it was supposed to be in North Smithfield, it's for Jill Cabett, is for three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Do we have a second? Any second, discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carovo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good night.
Good night, Dave.